Present.
Okay, Mr. Collins.
Present.
Mr. Loeb.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Present.
Ms. Panado.
Present.
Excellent. The floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the hearing scheduled at 11:00 AM, first I'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this conference. Hearing none, then actually the first case that we were here was the last case number 93. That is case BOH 1539217 with the address of 116 Evans Street. I believe Attorney Small will be representing this.
Yes, I am.
Am I right? Please proceed.
So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address of 51 Thompson Road. With me today is Mr. Jim Chen, who is the Art Project Architect. Today, we are here seeking relief to change the legal occupancy from the building from two-family to a three-family dwelling. The zoning sub-district here is a 3F 5,000. Our lot size is 5,100 square feet. Our zoning violations are as follows. Front yard setback requirement is 15 feet. We are proposing a 10-foot setback with modal. Side yard violation, the requirement is 10 feet. We have eight feet on the left-hand side. And usable open space is 400 square feet per unit. We have approximately 270 per unit. With regard to units themselves, Madam Chair, units are three-bedroom, two-bath, and are approximately 1,000 square feet. Will can stop there and open it up to any questions that the board may have.
That sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to take public testimony.
Good. Oh, can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Zane.
How you guys doing? Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 116 Evans Street had their abutters meeting on September 26, 2023. They also spoke with the Rock Neighborhood Association, which expressed some concerns, sorry, which expressed that they would want to ensure that the owner stays on top of property management due to it being previously embedded in attracting loitering teens. And ROC would also like to be notified as soon as units become available, as they do have neighbors that are interested in that. And then the GMNC, they also did speak with the GMNC, and the GMNC let us know that they are requiring them to do an MOU in writing that agrees to what Rock has asked for, specifically as it relates to notifying Rock Neighborhood Association as soon as the units become available before advertising. So they would like the MOU to be done before the work begins, and they would like the Neighborhood Association to be notified of property availability before those properties are advertised. Outside of that, our office has received no letters of support or opposition for this project, and we are going to put our recommendation to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Iyam David Muyewa with the Office of City Council Brian Morell. And in regards to this project, having received no letters of support or opposition, we'd like to offer our support.
And Madam Chair, have no raised hands. Thank you. Attorney Small, would you like to address the requests from Rock and GMNC?
Sure. We have been working diligently throughout this process with the abutters and members of the Rock Association, and those are not even issues for us. We will continue to work with them once the units become available. Yeah, so that's not a problem.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be there.
And before we proceed, just a reminder that we are a six-member board, and any applicant who wishes to request an administrative deferral may do so. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes, Madam Chair. We'll move on to case BOH 1540489 with the address of 26 Blueburg Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, as they explained to the board to us.
Chair members of the board, my name is Eileen Rosa from Rosa Design and Construction with business address 286 Pluto Avenue, Milton. And I am presenting this application on behalf of the owner. The existing dwelling is a single-family home located at a two-family 5,000 square feet zone. The proposed alteration is to change the occupancy from single-family to a two-family dwelling. The scope of work involves an addition of roof dormers on each side to create a second unit on the second and third floor. It also includes additions at the front and rear, renovation of front and rear porches to accommodate the units, and extension of living space into the basement. The existing single-family home has a total of 1,614 square feet. With the proposed change of use, the new unit one will have a total of 1,145 square feet between the lower level and the first floor with one bedroom and 1.5 bathrooms. And unit two will have a total of 1,531 square feet between the second floor and the third floor with five bedrooms and three bathrooms. When the application was submitted, the applicant received a refusal letter with a total of eight violations of the Boston zoning code. Most of these violations came up to the pre-existing non-conforming conditions. And I will walk through the violations shortly, but basically, most of these are because we are adding dormers and the additions within the same building perimeter. So the first violation is the lot area insufficient, which is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. This area falls for 5,000 square feet, and the existing lot size is 4,487 square feet. The second violation is additional lot area insufficient. The requirement is 3,000. The proposal is 2,443 square feet. The third violation is floor area ratio is excessive. The requirement is .5. The existing is .4, and what's being proposed is .6 for FAR. The building height, the building height is excesses in stories. It requires two and a half. That's what's allowed in the area. That's what's existing, and we're proposing three stories with a total of 33 feet high, which is the existing. The next violation is the open usable space insufficient. The requirement in this area is 1,750. The existing is 1,580 square feet, and what's being proposed per unit is 790 square feet. The next violation is front yard insufficient, which is an existing non-conforming condition. What's allowing the area is 20 feet. The existing is nine feet, nine inches, and it's the same dimension what's being proposed, nine feet, nine inches. The side yard, specifically on the left side, it's another, one of the others violations. What's requiring the area is 10 feet. The existing is four feet, three inches, and because of the dormers additions, what's being proposed is the same setback, four feet, three inches. And the last one, the rear yard side insufficient as well. What's being required in this area is 40 feet. The existing is 32 feet, nine inches, and it's the same dimension what's being proposed, 32 feet, nine inches. This is all I have to share with you for now, and I'm open to the board with any questions. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, ONS hosted an abutters meeting on November 29. The applicant was on to answer several questions from residents regarding some specifics with the project, as well as the possible construction timeline. Our office is unaware of any serious concerns at this time, and with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Diana Brodchak from Counselor Enrique Pepin's office. The counselor would like to go on record that he supports this project. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, have no raised hands. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOH 1539221 with the address of 246 R. Park Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain the case to the board.
Yes, my name is Ivan Hernandez. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm speaking on behalf of the homeowner for the project. The proposal is to replace an existing two-car garage that was in the backyard. It was in pretty tough condition, had to be demolished because it was in a hazard condition, and replace it with a new two-car garage. The new garage would be bigger, a little bigger than the existing garage, and it would be side-by-side two-car parking with a storage space above. If, as you look here at the plot plan, the entrance to the garage actually faces the side, the easement on the side yard. They would drive and take a left into the garage. We would have two cars side by side with the stairs going up to a storage space above. The current garage was same shape, gable roof, side by side, but substantially smaller and really could not accommodate a two-car garage. So since the homeowner is replacing it, he figured go with a bigger, more comfortable garage that would allow him to get in and out of the vehicles comfortably. That's pretty much the scope of work.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have...
Can you talk about the violations?
The violations, the setback violations, we are actually setting the garage in the same location of the previous garage, so those might be considered existing, pre-existing conditions. And then the height would be a new violation. We are going a little higher with the garage as because we're accommodating the storage space above. So the required height is, the maximum height allowed is 15 feet, and we're going up to 20 feet in order to accommodate, like I said, storage and comfortable space for storage above.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, ONS hosted an abutters meeting on November 21. The applicant then went on to meet with the West Roxbury, West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted on November 28 to support this proposal unanimously. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other offices? Okay, Madam Chair, have no raised hands. Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Okay. Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOH 1530397 with the address of 125 Redland Road. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain the case to the board.
Sorry, there's a raised hand here. One second. Kyle?
Morning, everyone. My name is Kyle Xu. I'm the architect for 125 Redland Road. So this project is interior layout change only. What we plan to do is turn the attic space into some living area. As you can see on the plan, we have two study areas here. And then, again, there's no exterior scope in this application. Everything is interior. The FAR is the same. So this is basically the scope. I think this is pretty straightforward, but feel free to ask me if you have any questions about this application.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, ONS hosted an abutters meeting on November 13. Some neighbors have expressed questions about whether some work was already being done on the property, as well as questions if this would end up being rentals or condos. The applicant then went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on November 28, and I believe they were supported by the Neighborhood Council. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Okay, and I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOH 1535026 with the address of 2250 Dorchester Avenue. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain the case to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pogini, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Rockland Trust Bank. This branch of the bank is located at 2250 Dorchester Ave. in Lower Mills. The zoning district is neighborhood shopping, and the lot size is 9,454 square feet. Rockland Trust is looking to renovate this existing branch bank at 2250 Dorchester Ave. A full interior branch renovation is planned in order to modernize the existing branch space, as well as bring the facility into ADA compliance. This new branch represents a major commitment by Rockland Trust and their Dorchester customers and community. Rockland currently has an existing drive-up drawer and window, as well as a drive-up ATM at this location. The Rockland proposes to replace the drawer and window with a pneumatic tube further back on the building and construct a two-lane drive-up canopy structure to incorporate both the ATM and the pneumatic tube. With the new drive-up lanes, Rockland Trust seeks to address both traffic and pedestrian concerns. And the reason for that is presently, if more than two or three vehicles are parked in queue, it can extend into the sidewalk, and it can actually get onto Dorchester Ave. So in order to undertake this project, we pushed it back. And in addition to this, Rockland will, while this branch is undergoing construction, they'll move a temporary branch to 67 Richmond Street, which is the adjacent property to this, again, neighborhood shopping, which is directly behind this branch. And the temporary branch will be utilized during the renovation timeframe at Dorchester Ave. The ISD initially set us for off-street parking. That was a mistake. We have 10 spots under the code. We only need five. Use, a drive-up is not allowed, however. As I'm here, one already exists, so we're just pushing it back further to make it more pedestrian safe. They had this as a rear yard, which is a 20-foot requirement. We're actually at 25 feet and screening, putting a fence abutting a residential sub-district. And the BPDA recommendation addresses those mistakes in the zoning violation. This proposal went through a full community process, 100% support of the abutters, and unanimous support of Lower Mills Civic Association. At the end of the day, this is all about just adding a drive-up lane and pushing them further into the property so that not to interfere with traffic and pedestrian safety. Thanks for allowing us to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Pogini. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ross Crocker in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office has, can confirm that the proponents have completed their community process at this time within an abutters meeting being held in November of 2023. There was one abutter in attendance who supported the project. Likewise, the local civic association has a letter of support on file. At this time, we'd like to defer to this board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Curly, are you prepared to speak yet?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, Amanda Curly, Counselor Fitzgerald's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jill McEckren, City Councilor Erin Murphy's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. And have no additional raised hands. Thanks. Okay, just one last question, Mr. Pogini. The BPDA recommendations commented on curb cuts, curb cut width. Any comment on that?
Yes, we're going to just use the existing curb cut. Madam Chair, it's kind of a unique situation. If you're looking at the building, to the right is Path Pizza, which is kind of a very famous place in Lower Mills. And they share a curb cut, and there's a fence down, a median strip that comes down the side of it. So it is kind of broken into twos for two different entrances.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Ms. Aiken? Mr. Yen? Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Ivan. Next, we have case BOH 1512575 with the address of 115 Adams Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain the case to the board to us.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. I just want to bring your attention, that was the question I was going to ask, just I wanted to ensure that you guys had the correct plans, because I know what was written to the record as far as the advertisement. It was the original set of plans, as well as the BPDA recommendation. But it seems like that you guys do have the correct set of plans in front of you, so I'm going to proceed. With me today is the owner, John Reddington, as well as the architect, Tim Johnson. This is a proposal to raise the existing structure and erect a new three-story, nine-unit residential dwelling with 11 parking spaces located within a 3FD 3,000 sub-district on approximately about an 8,071-foot long. The building will be all-electric, meeting the stretch energy code of 20% more efficient. Further, all units will have accessibility access by an elevator. Property is located at the end of a residential block abutting Ronan Park. The erection of a multifamily dwelling is in line with the planning goals of increasing the city's housing stock. There is also precedent for the proposed scale and use of the building in the surrounding area, specifically to mention the apartments directly across the street. Applicant understands the need to create more homeownership opportunities, and even though not required to do so, has committed to enter into an agreement with the Office of Housing to offer one unit as affordable. All units will be owner-occupied. Ground floor will consist of parking for 11 cars, as well as trash storage. Floors 1, 2, and 3 will mimic each other to contain two two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom on each floor, ranging from approximately 1135 square feet to 1469 square feet. The three units on the third floor will have an exclusive-use roof decks, accessed by hatch. We have four violations. Use, as we're proposing nine units in this sub-district. Additional lot area, code requires 1,500 square feet per additional dwelling, and this proposal calls for approximately 900 square feet per additional. Floor area ratio, we are proposing a 1.6, and a 1.3 is compliant, which is consistent within the neighborhood. Height, 40 feet is what is required by the code. The building itself is 40 feet, but there is a violation due to the Nordstier headhouse for access for the mechanicals. The proposed height is consistent with the contextual heights of the surrounding buildings in the neighborhood. The impacts of the height are mitigated by the proposal's location at the base of the retaining wall below Ronan Park. At this point, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Attorney Spitz, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there were some comments from the disability commission.
Please read them into the record.
They stated that there is no accessible, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There is no accessible route from either the common spaces or the individual units to the roof decks.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm sorry. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, would you like to explain the BPDA recommendation, if you're present?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Our recommendation was based on 12 units and not nine, so can only speak to that. But knowing that area very well, I mean, I know there are brick apartment buildings less than 100 feet away. But it is a triple-decker district, which speaks to, you know, the architecture of that site. It's a blight right now. I drive past it almost every day. But with that said, again, we were basing our recommendation on 12. If the board does seem fit to approve this, we just ask that it come with design review so that we can keep the context of triple-decker architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz, before I proceed, do you want to just address the disability commission comments?
Yeah, so it is fully accessible, as we do have an elevator. But I'm going to have to defer to, Tim Johnson's here with us. Tim, can you speak more relative to the accessway for the roof decks?
Yes, Tim Johnson, Madam Chair. These are not common roof decks, Madam Chair. These are dedicated to each unit.
Okay.
So wooden, per code, common areas do need to be accessible, but these are private roof decks, and those would not need to be accessible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. I know we've had some personnel changes, but I understand that multiple community meetings were held by ONS. A number of residents expressed concerns regarding height, the proposed density, the use being blocked due to its proximity to the nearby Ronan Park, as well as concerns regarding parking. You know, I know the applicant has a large parking ratio. The concerns that we heard in the community were also echoed by the Greater Boden Geneva Neighborhood Association as well. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Amanda Curly, Counselor Fitzgerald's. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Amanda Curley, Councilor Fitzgerald's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Nisa, you looking to give testimony here? I see your hand, Nisa Harrison. Don't think so.
Sorry, yes. I'm sorry.
Are you looking to give testimony for this proposal?
Oh, good morning, members of the zoning board. Yes, I'd like to give testimony regarding the 115 Adams address. I'm not sure if people understand where this nine-unit, reduced from twelve-unit is located. It's right next to Ronan, opposite three triple-deckers. And further away from the triple-deckers are two units that I think have six-family housing, six-family housing, and they have their parking in the back. So when you put now on this very small land, this nine-unit, reduced from twelve, with eleven parking spaces on Adams Street, a popular, you know, a busy street next to a park, I'm concerned about the safety. Now you want to raise it, you know, you're, this building is going to upset the landscape. It's, I don't see how it blends into nine units on a, I don't see how it blends into what is currently there. And the other thing about parking and safety, if you're having occupied owner spaces and people are coming over, they have friends, and you have nine units, how is it safe? Right now, I live...
I'm sorry, you muted yourself? I'm not sure if you muted yourself, Ms. Harrison.
Sorry, I live right next to it, and so the only pull-ins are across the street and next to Ronan Park.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Please wrap up.
Sorry, I didn't know how. But anyway, I oppose it for a whole bunch of different reasons. Right before the guy died, there was a smaller building and it was appropriate. And now this developer is coming in with this very densely designed building.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you. I have additional raised hands. Oh, I'm sorry, two pop up on your tandy side. I apologize. Do you want me to keep going with the? Okay, yes. Kat?
Um, yes. Hi, how are you?
Okay. Can you give us a name and address?
Sure. I'm, I live on Stanton Street. My name is Kat. I live right, actually right in front of where any of the construction is going to be going on for the condo building. I am in opposition of this as well. I would like the zoning board to adhere to Article 65 and Section 9. There is a lot of history that is on the street. It is a very calm street. I don't feel comfortable having units built, especially when I know that the affordable housing is probably not actually going to be taking place. I was actually in housing for about six to seven years.
Ma'am, are you here to speak to 115 Adams or for 43 or 45 Stanton Street?
Forty-three to forty-five.
Okay, we're not on that case yet, so please stay tuned. So next caller? Yep, I'm Nene Otto Body. Are you looking to give testimony on this proposal? I sent a request to unmute you if you are. I think you might be, I'm, okay, sorry, you're muted. May I have testimony? They're for Milton Ave. Okay, okay. Okay, can you just lower your hand? Okay, I have no additional raised hands. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Okay, no worries. Would the applicant like to respond to those issues and concerns?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I would like to just remind the board that this property is located at the end of a residential block abutting Ronan Park. As Mr. Hampton did cite, the site is a blight sore as it is stands now. And I do want to remind the board that we are in line with increasing the city's housing stock. We provide these additional units, and a big component is where the applicant isn't required to provide the affordability and is committed to do so with the Office of Housing to offer one unit as affordable. We do understand the concerns that we have heard from some of the surrounding neighbors as well, coupled with that, we did submit seven letters from abutters and neighbors in support to this proposal. And again, just, you know, lastly, just want to mention that some of the things, even though that the BPDA's recommendation was on the previous proposal standing at twelve, some of what they said, that there was precedent for the proposed scale and the use of the building, the surrounding area. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Thank you.
Pause and swing back over.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review. It's a pretty good building. I think it fits there, sits in that area.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll now move on to the business discussions scheduled for 11:30. Before we go further, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, 43-45 Stanton Street.
That would be case BOA 144-3137, with the address of 43-45 Stanton Street. Would you care to explain this? Attorney LaCass?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark LaCass, LaCass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the project proponent. Based upon the six-member board status today, we are seeking an administrative deferral to the next soonest available date.
Javier?
Madam Chair, March 12 would be that date.
Okay, just got to start moving on to other dates, Javier. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer, was it March 12?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you kindly.
There are no further requests for withdrawal or deferral.
Mr. Secretary, 841 Columbia Road, please.
So that would be case BOA 147-9078, with the address of 841 Columbia Road. Would you, would you explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton with a business address of 100 Franklin Street on behalf of the applicant. We have made some final revisions to our plans and will be submitting them through ISD. So at this point, we are seeking a deferral.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, March 26 would be a deferral date.
Does that work for the attorney?
Yes, it does.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until March 26, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, we have two raised hands. I'll unmute them to see if they're requesting a deferral.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, it's Nene Otto.
Yeah, I don't, uh...
Are you requesting a deferral from Nene Otto Body?
Yes, that's correct. Just because we have to continue meeting with the neighborhood council. We have, so we have to do the...
Which addresses this? I'm sorry. What exactly?
This is a 4 to 6, no denial.
Okay.
4 to 6, no denial.
That's the first case, Mr. Stenbridge?
So that would be case, that is, case BOA 149-8625, with the address of 4 to 6, Milton Ave. Would you go ahead and report?
I think he just said it more community process. Javier, is there, what date are you looking at?
Madam Chair, March 26, make a suggestion for that date.
Does that work for the applicant?
March 26?
Yes. Does that give you enough time?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until March 26.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Was that another raised hand that we saw?
I believe I saw another hand, but I do not see it anymore.
Okay. All right, Mr. Stenbridge.
With that, we will move on to two companion cases. Case BOA 141-5566, with the address of 22 Torrey Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 141-5562, which also has an address of 26, I'm sorry, which has an address in 26 Torrey Street. If the applicant and or their representative, president, would you explain the situation to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner Anastasio Baptista and James Christopher from 686 Architects. This is a proposal to subdivide the lot into two lots. Lot A, known as 26 Torrey Street, and Lot B, to be known as 22 Torrey Street. Lot A will maintain the existing three-family with three off-street parking spaces, approximately 3,359 square feet. Lot B will contain a new three-story, five-unit multifamily dwelling with five off-street parking spaces in the rear on approximately 4,971 square foot lot. There will be an easement recorded to allow access for parking for the Lot A as they will have to enter and cross through the land owned by Lot B. This proposal is located on a corner lot within a 3F 6,000 sub-district, one block away from Neighborhood Shopping in local convenience sub-district along Washington Street. The erection of the five-unit dwelling is in line with the planning goals of increasing the city's housing stock, especially within the commercial corridor. Unit one will be located on the ground floor, which will consist of a three-bedroom approximately 1,133 square feet. Unit two, three, four, and five will consist of two bedrooms. Units two and three will be located on the second floor. Units four and five will be located on the third floor. These units will range from 868 square feet to approximately 945 square feet. All units will be owner-occupied. Violations that we do have, we have a use violation. We are proposing five units in a 3F sub-district. We have a floor area ratio violation. We are proposing a 1.13 and a .4 is compliant, but the proposed is consistent in scale and massing within the neighborhood. We have a height violation. We are compliant as to the proposed feet, but we have a violation of stories as we are proposing three stories. Two and a half stories is compliant under the code. We have violations for lot frontage and width. 22 Torrey Street is 50 feet and frontage is 44.23 is what we're proposing. Same thing with the width, we're at 41.9 feet. As far as 26 Torrey Street, those violations were created with the subdivision. We have a width of 30 feet and a frontage of 35.93 feet. We have a front yard violation. We're proposing 9.1 feet and 15 feet is what is compliant under the code. Being a corner lot makes the topography of the land very difficult to be compliant with that setback. The applicants were focused on preserving an existing tree, as you can actually see clearly from the site plan that's shown in front of us right now. The side yard violation, the 26 Torrey Street, we have, what is, there's three feet on the left and 5.1 feet on the right, which is pre-existing. 22 Torrey Street is 3.1 feet on the left, but due to the bump out along the sidewalk, we are providing zero side yard setback and 6.4 feet to the right of it. What is compliant is 10 feet on the side yard setbacks. Parking, we are proposing one space per unit, but the code requires 1.25 spaces per unit. But again, is it consistent with the city's goals of reducing dependency on private vehicles? We are also in line with the BPDA's recommendation of approval, as well as increase in the housing stock within the commercial corridor. At this point, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
What's the rationale for increasing that bump out to a zero lot line?
James, I'm going to defer to you as that was one of your changes, James from 686.
Lively aesthetic, just to give that end of the building a little bit of shape and shadow line so that it wasn't just a long, flat wall along Moody Street.
And then also, if it is, if this is approved by this board today, this is something that can be addressed, whether it's a new erection, that can be addressed during BPDA design review.
Certainly, we have space to adjust the siding of the building or to remove the bow altogether.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, can you, can you go over your recommendations? If you're available?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. These should have been combined into one, where we are in support of the new, in the new erection, the subdivision, and the parking, and the access. We're in favor of this project. I can't really explain why we'd support 22 Torrey Street and have a denial without prejudice on 26. That really doesn't make too much sense. So I'm going to go with our 22 Torrey Street, where we're approving the erection of the new five units with the accessory parking and the easement to the parking at number 26.
Thank you. That helps clarify my underlying question.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Madam Chair. That's confusing. Sorry about that.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS had hosted an abutters meeting on December 7th a while back, I believe, 2022, regarding the proposal to build seven units on the subdivided lot. The abutters meeting was lightly attended. There was some concerns just with general gentrification in the area as well as displacement. The applicant pointed out that this would be a new build. This wouldn't be displacing any current tenants. I understand the applicant met with the TNT a couple of times as the plans changed. The TNT sent in a letter of opposition and expressed that they would like the applicant to defer and take more time to work with the civic. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Newman, just to confirm, because you started off by saying this was a larger number of units, was that letter based on the larger number of units or the current number of units?
Believe it's the current.
Okay, thank you.
Here, members of the Board, I am Dylan Lee with the Office of City Council, Brian Morel. And I also was speaking with the civic TNT CIA, and in doing so, I was told the same thing. And I believe it is more about the fact that they weren't made aware of the changes, so they're just requesting that they present against the civic so that the community can be aware.
Okay, thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
So I can appreciate the concerns by the civic group. So we did meet with the civic group once, where they provided us, when that was at a seven-unit proposal. So that first meeting, all the changes that we were suggested of preserving the tree ownership, as well as reducing the unit count, were all accommodated through the applicant and the architectural team. We did go back and meet with that group a second time. And we didn't hear yet of any sort of concerns from this group until late yesterday afternoon. I personally don't think there is any room for other changes to be made. I don't think that it would warrant another meeting. I don't think anything else is going to be accommodated. We felt that based upon that letter. I'm not quite sure if the board has received it. Again, I just saw it for the first time. A lot of the issues they were raising were already accommodated, again, for the proposal, so I'm going to leave it into your direction, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Are there any other questions from the board?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Mr. Stembbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Up we go. Next, we have two uh, two more companion cases. The first being case BOA one-five-three-five-three-three-five with the address of ninety-eight Bennington Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one-five-three-five-three-three-seven, also with the address of ninety-eight Bennington Street. If the, if the applicant and or their representative is present?
Yes, uh, Mr. Stembbridge. Good morning. Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, uh two-forty-five Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing three-unit dwelling located on uh Bennington Street, which serves as the main drag for the East Boston community. Um the building, uh right, jump to the next slide, a little easier to see. Uh the building we're talking about is this uh multicolored building here uh in towards the middle of the screen. Our proposal involves a complete rehabilitation of the existing three-family structure in a vertical addition with a change of occupancy of four dwelling units. Uh if we scroll down a couple of slides, we can get to the actual rendering of the proposed uh building itself. One more, one more beyond that. There we go. Um so I, I think it's important to pause here quickly because I did have a chance to read the recommendation by the Boston Planning and Development Agency, um which indicates that a denial would be appropriate. The variances that we do seek under Article fifty-three uh should not be granted. Couple of things I will point out, as I mentioned in my last hearing. Uh first and most importantly is the IPod for East Boston has expired, expired in November of twenty-twenty-three. And therefore, the standards for which the board should be reviewing these are not under the uh guidelines for Article fifty-three, but more so under the proposed recommendations for planning East Boston. Uh I would submit that the proposed project, uh although it's been in a pipeline for a little bit of time, um you know, we had an opportunity to review the recommendations and we've tried to align this project uh to be very consistent with the goals and objectives of planning East Boston. So I will uh let's say that the last presentation run through uh quickly what the zoning relief that would be required currently as well as how it aligns with planning East Boston. Uh because this is a three-F two-thousand district, uh a four-story multifamily use would not be allowed uh in the three-F two-thousand district. I believe that is one of the reasons why uh the recommendation recommended denial. However, this district is proposed to be an EBR four district, which is um uh what the planning East Boston recommendations have for this section of Bennington Street. Under EBR four, multifamily use is allowed, uh as is a four-story dwelling up to fifty feet in height. Uh I would also point out that uh the FAR that is typically required under Article fifty-three, which is one of the items that was cited in the recommendation, uh is eliminated under uh EBR four. So the new zoning would not have an FAR requirement. And again, this building would accordingly align. If we want to jump down to the site plan, uh which I believe is the next, uh part of the next page, uh shows the proposed conditions. Um so generally, with respect to the existing footprint of the building, Madam Chair, we don't change much other than reorganizing the decks to the rear. As you can see, we have a very generous setback in the rear uh for the rear property, which is at forty-four and a half feet. That not only complies with Article fifty-three current zoning, but new EBR four zoning indicates that uh we should have a one-third setback in the rear. So clearly, we exceed uh the setback requirement under the rear yard, both uh for current zoning as well as proposed zoning. Uh more importantly is the permeable space uh that would be necessary. Uh we do have the required forty percent uh permeable area based upon uh the rear yard, but it's not gonna be occupied by any structures or parking. Uh so again, this would, uh that would align with the new requirements under planning East Boston for uh permeable open space. Uh with respect to the uh parking, uh this is an existing, pre-existing three-unit dwelling. Um under new zoning for East Boston, uh zip, uh up to three units does not require any parking. It's only when you get to the fourth unit that you have one parking space per unit. Um I believe consistent with past practice under Article fifty-three and certainly the past regulations, uh the zoning code will only require parking for the additional dwelling as they're being pro, proposed to an existing structure. And in this case, it would be practically impossible to add parking to the site. Uh not to mention the fact that this section of Bennington Street is pretty well-traveled. So if we were even able to add parking, uh it would be somewhat of a challenge to introduce a curb cut as well as to have traffic uh sa, safely coming in and out of the property. I don't think ETD also would appreciate uh us creating one parking spot on the site uh based again upon past policy when it comes to off-street parking. So although we would not align with the one additional parking space that would be required, I believe that is the only item we would require relief for under new zoning. Uh and again, I, I believe the current zoning uh violations would essentially be eliminated and once the new zoning was adopted. Uh the unit sizes range from about eight-hundred-and-twenty-five to eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet each. They're all two-bedroom uh two-bath. This is intended for homeownership upon completion. I will pause uh to see if there are any questions from the board that I may have to address.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. Um I think, is there a basement? Unit in?
There, there's a basement, no basement unit. I believe we only have uh mechanical and storage in the basement level.
Okay, must be confusing another. All right, all right. That's all I was just curious about the new, in the relationship to the new seat broadlines, but that doesn't seem to apply then.
Yep.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Melvia Gomis with the Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a butters meeting for this project on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And a butter at this meeting at ninety-one Bennington Street expressed support for the design and shared their support for more housing. The applicant also met with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in May and Maverick Central voted to support the project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenali, Boston Ground Water Trust. We have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Council Colletti's office. The council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Can we add design review and the G-Cod?
Uh if you'd like to, show a motion to approve with BPDA design review and G-Cod applicability.
Thank you. Mr. Stembbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Uh, no, because of the height.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Um Madam Chair, I believe there was building code uh with respect to access to the proposed roof deck uh without a headhouse. I know the policy in East Boston is to not have headhouse. So I, I don't know if we need a separate code on that, but that was the companion case, I believe.
Okay, Javier?
Uh Madam Chair, yeah, you could do a quick uh motion and vote on that as well, just to be safe.
Got it. Uh may I have a motion on the, the second piece? It's a stairwell instead of a headhouse, correct?
Correct. Access by?
Make a motion to approve access by hatch instead of a stairwell?
Instead of a headhouse, yep.
Instead of a headhouse. Make a motion to approve by access via hatch instead of a headhouse.
May I have a second? Second. Mr. Stembbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-three-three-two-six-zero with the address of one oh-six Barnes Avenue. It's the applicant's and or their representative, president, they're explaining to the board to us?
Cass, uh good afternoon, good morning again, Mr. Stembbridge and uh members of the board, Madam Chair. Uh Richard Lins, two-forty-five Summer Street. On behalf of the petitioner, uh owner of one oh-six Barnes Avenue in East Boston. Um Madam Chair, this uh represents a pre-existing condition that we are essentially seeking to legalize. Uh the premises uh have been used uh for a three-unit dwelling uh since at least two thousand and five. I know we've included records from the city of Boston, um tax uh assessors showing uh the use of the property. And I fully understand that that doesn't necessarily mean that constitutes the legal use. Uh I believe my client had gone through some uh process after recently acquiring the property. Uh was informed by ISD that this uh needed to be addressed by way of occupancy. Um so I can run through what the conditions are of the property. If you want to jump down to the next slide to show some of the existing context, uh we can go over it. So this is located in the East Boston neighborhood, backs up to the MBTA Orient Heights parking lot, as you can see in the upper-left corner photo. Uh the lot size itself is under five thousand square feet, forty-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet to be exact. Um again, the comparisons for the zoning districts um for current zoning as well as proposed zoning uh don't change much with respect to use. Uh the dimensions of the property itself probably the most significant to discuss. If we want to jump down to a couple of slides further with existing conditions, uh there's our tax bill. So again, showing that we do have uh evidence, not only of use, but assessment since two thousand and five. That is what the city of Boston uh identifies as property as. Um so this is merely just to confirm that occupancy, we're not proposing any work to the premises. We're not expanding anything uh with respect to the footprint of property or the height. It will simply continue uh as it's currently occupied. Do I jump down to the next slide, please? Well, I can go one more slide, I think, to, yeah, the floor plans. So showing the conditions themselves, we do have full walkout condition for the basement, seeing the rear elevation of the property. Um the property is oriented so that uh the uh back portion of the property has that small bump out window you can see uh in the floor plan. Uh each of the levels uh currently have two bedrooms uh and roughly around eleven hundred square feet in size. Can we jump down to the next slide, please? Uh we show here the elevations, showing the uh height from Barnes Avenue as it um comes down towards the rear of the property. We have at least seven foot uh six-inch uh clear ceiling height in the lower level, so that level would uh comply with the state building code with respect to building height. Next slide, please. Uh I can go one more slide. So the building itself um does occupy uh approximately thirty percent of the lot under the proposed new zoning. The maximum lot coverage would be forty percent, so we would be in compliance. Uh and as I said, we're not proposing any additions or adjustments to the footprint itself. Uh we would easily also meet the permeable surface. Uh we could achieve that by uh showing uh the space in the rear portion of the yard uh in relationship to the amount of overall lot size, uh as well as what we have in the front yard and the side yard as well. Uh so that would reach the fifty percent that's required under the new zoning for permeable space. Um the maximum floor plate that's allowed in the new zoning district would be eighteen hundred square feet. Our floor plate would be fourteen hundred and twenty square feet uh and therefore would be in compliance with proposed new zoning recommendations as would the height of our building, uh which would be limited to two and a half stories, thirty-five feet. So with respect to the new zoning that's being proposed for uh this section of East Boston, this building would be dimensionally compliant and could comply with all of the other requirements, including lot coverage and permeability. The only issue would be the use. This zoning district would permit up to two units uh per dwelling. Uh but as I had mentioned, this has been a longstanding, pre-existing condition uh that we're simply seeking to legalize based upon the past history of the property. Uh I'll stop there and uh answer any questions to the board.
Thank you. Um can you confirm if there's basement living?
There is. Yeah, there, there is live, there is space uh on the lower level. Uh that is um that full walkout condition I showed in the elevation. Um I know Mr. Aiken's previous uh question regarding the last proposal was?
Was probably about this one, yes.
Yeah, with, with the coastal flood resiliency line is. So at this time, coastal flood resiliency uh I believe is towards the rear of the property. And the uh actual applicability of coastal flood resiliency overlay uh would not apply at present uh unless it's an Article eighty size project uh where we're adding fifteen thousand or more square feet or, I'm sorry, twenty thousand more square feet or fifty more dwelling units. Uh so although, again, this is a pre-existing condition, I do recognize uh the coastal flood question. Uh but we feel the applicability is not uh, is not uh uh part of this, part of this proposal at this time.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Just to clarify, Mr. Lins, so, so the city's been taxing this houses as three families since two thousand and five, right?
That's correct. There's two, yeah, through the chair, that, actually, this, my client is the third owner of this property. Um I'm not sure why it didn't come up previously. I don't believe anybody's done any work to the property. Um but since uh two owners ago, that, that's how it's been taxed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. Melvia Gomis with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a butters meeting for this project on September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Noah Butters represented on the call. The Orient Heights Neighborhood Council met on July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to discuss and vote on a proposal that was presented. The Orient Heights Neighborhood Council membership ultimately voted to oppose the project with one member in favor, forty opposed and one abstained. The resident in opposition, residents in opposition of the project felt that the three-family was not in line with the existing zoning for the area or in line with the current direction of planning East Boston. A butters also raised concern over the existing condition and the upkeep of the property. ONS also received a letter in opposition to the project that was forwarded to the board and states concerns over the upkeep of the property. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Sebastian Power from Council Colletti's office. The council appreciates that there are no changes to the footprint with no additions to height or density. She recognizes that this property has been taxed and assessed as a triple-decker for almost twenty years as well. And she would like to call attention to the fact that East Boston has just gone through an intensive rezoning initiative that limits housing in this area through the EBR two-point-five zoning with a maximum of two families. The neighborhood group voted overwhelmingly in opposition due to this discrepancy as it may set precedent to new projects in the future. She doesn't support precedent being set, although we will defer to the uh expertise of legal counsel of the board, given that this is a technicality and it's been a three-family for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll respond just briefly, Madam Chair, for no further comments.
Jessica, any other raised hands? Doesn't sound like it, and uh a, a, as you're commenting or responding, Mr. Lins, can you also, if you have any insight into uh any of the neighboring houses? Are they generally ones, twos, any threes? Thank you.
Yes, um there are three families located on uh Barnes Avenue. There are a mix of ones, twos, and threes diagonally across the street from the section of multifamily. Um so there are, there are other uh types of uses similar in this area. I do appreciate the counselor's comments about precedent. I think um I've made the comment plenty of times in the past that the board's actions in this case do not set any precedent in future cases. They're not bound by any decisions they make on one project as they may relate to other projects. I believe this project or this particular proposal uh is unique and we are sensitive to the concerns that we did hear in the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council at the time about the product, the property being uh in compliance with uh new zoning. As I laid out, I believe that the building itself uh would conform dimensionally to all new zoning requirements under EBR two-point-five. Uh but the longstanding condition of this property as a pre-existing three-family uh should be uh recognized as something that uh at least uh is not necessarily to follow the current owner. Um I would also point out, the board, this building is occupied. Uh if the board were not to grant relief, and I fully understand it's within the board's purview to do that, uh that would potentially result in displacement of uh one of the residential units.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve is just based on the tax.